Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting, October 4th, 6:00 PM. I'd like to ask the superintendent to lead us in the Village of Allegiance. There aren't any changes in the meeting agenda. Right now, we're going to go to the student recognition portion of this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is an opportunity to celebrate altruism in its purest form. We will begin with a group of high school students who call themselves MathMates. Their journey of volunteerism began during COVID. These students recognize that younger students in our community no longer attending school in person and grappling with the transition to online learning might need additional support in their study of mathematics. And so, the conception of MathMates came to fruition. These very devoted high school students have been providing tutoring to elementary and 7th grade students throughout the pandemic. It is truly a privilege and honor to recognize them this evening. I would like to ask Senior Samara Silverman to come to the microphone to tell us about this incredible endeavor. Samara?
Hi, my name is Samara Silverman, and I'm senior. I want to tell you about our program, MathMates. After witnessing my 14-year-old brother and his friends struggle to learn algebra remotely during the quarantine, I realized that grade school students must really struggle to learn math remotely. In order to make the process more manageable for these kids, I enlisted four friends from my BC Calculus class, Rudy Nizza, Jonah Pitchler, Rebecca Blumenthal, and Alyssa Symes, to assist. And after reaching out to my 4th grade teacher, Ms. Titlebaum, and the principal of NASCAEG, Ms. Levine, MathMates was born. MathMates is a free online tutoring service that provides weekly one-on-one math support to elementary school students. While we initially planned to work with the 4th graders at NASCAEG, we expanded our efforts to cover grades 2 through 7 in all five elementary schools. MathMates currently has 15 tutors who customize lessons to individual needs and provide review, recovery, and enrichment based on what the parents request. To date, MathMates have served 26 students, and we have provided over 180 hours of free math tutoring.
That is really amazing and wonderful. I think they deserve a major round of applause. I'd like to invite Mr. Bernhardt to please come up to the podium.
This is a truly wonderful, wonderful thing that our students have done. It reminds me of a speech that we heard from Board Trustee Mr. Connors a couple of years ago at graduation, a wonderful speech on volunteerism. And this was really the spirit of what we saw over the last six months with our students. So, to me, the math is near and dear, but it's really, as Mrs. Pettis had said, the altruistic move on your part that really makes our community proud. Could we please have the following students come up? Julia Zhu. Annie Vorden Yan. Varden Yan? Okay, I'll give it to you in a little bit, we're good. Grace Lynn? They're busy, okay. Samara Silverman. You know she's here. Sophia Straciella. Nancy Zhang. Let me say your name again. Staciola, let's say it correct. Sophia Staciola. Nancy Zhang. Jordan DiTaro. Alyssa Seams. Rudolph Nizza. Caitlin Tong. Rebecca Blumenthal. Jonah Pitchler. Kara Scolara. Sophia Catalino. Amber Liu. Julia Zhu. This was so much better than reading the help names in the morning for people who did not complete. Congratulations, all of you. Congratulations.
As we move on to the next segment of our board meeting, we want to thank all of you for coming this evening. As you know, the state has rules about only 50 people gathering at once, so unfortunately, we can't all stay. But I do want to just say to our students, wow, we are incredibly proud of you and thank your parents for all of their support too, to make this possible. And we wish you well. I know many of you are seniors, and we much continued success for all of you and our junior and sophomore students who are represented here this evening. Bill and I, Bernhardt, had an opportunity to meet with the students last, I guess it was about Friday or the previous Friday, and just an amazing group of students, just incredible. So, very impressive, and we wish you well, and thank you for your contributions to the community.
Have a great evening. Good evening. Now, we'll move on to our Board of Recognition, Board of Education recognition portion of this evening's agenda.
Tonight is a particularly special Board of Education meeting as our school community will acknowledge and honor our Board of Education trustees. As you are all aware, this is a position elected by the school community and one that does not bear any compensation or extrinsic reward. However, it is a position of great importance, and the strength, sustainability, and vision of our district is due in large part to their tireless devotion, care, and altruistic acts of service. While our Board of Education is comprised of seven individual members, they work in unison, exemplifying the tenets of volunteerism and devoting superlative time and effort to enhance the educational service and programs offered to our district students while also balancing the fiscal responsibilities inherent within their role. They are community leaders, advocates, and decision-makers, assiduously responding to the needs of our community and serving in the best interests of all children. Their willingness to step beyond convention and support the administration and staff has been a gift based on trust, positive regard, and mutual respect. To each of our board members, we extend our deepest gratitude for all that you so unselfishly give to each child, staff member, and community as a whole. Please join me in welcoming each of our schools and their respective representatives who have some words of praise and a gift for each of our board trustees, district clerk, and student representative. We will begin with Arrowhead, Ms. Marissa Ritten.
Good evening. Mrs. Horowitz and I are so proud and honored to represent Arrowhead and to give our appreciation to the entire board, but tonight especially to one of the district's unsung heroes, Ms. Kathy Simponia. And we have here Jordan Stiles. She is a 6th grader in Danny Walsh's 6th grade class. And with us also is Danny Walsh and Debbie Karlik, who are our student government advisors, and Jordan is also a member of student government.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Stiles, and I'm from Arrowhead Elementary School. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing our district clerk, Kathy Simponia. I was lucky enough to interview her and discover about her job, her family, and what she likes to do for fun. Here are some highlights of her conversation. Ms. Simponia has worked as our district clerk for 10 years. Her job involves being in charge of the annual budget vote. She also runs the library budget vote. She attends every board meeting and is responsible for taking minutes. Ms. Simponia finds annual budget the toughest part of her job, especially keeping up with the yearly changes. Ms. Simponia does have a life outside her job. She has two children, a daughter and a son. She also has a granddaughter too. They live in South Carolina and Connecticut. In her free time, she likes to read. Also, she loves sewing and making quilts. And if that wasn't enough, she also enjoys hiking and bicycle riding. As you can see, Ms. Simponia is an interesting and hardworking person. As her interview wrapped up, I did have to ask the question that I'm sure is on most people's minds right now. I asked her point blank, if you could be an animal, what would it be? She responds, "A dog, because they're smart and loyal." So true. In closing, thank you, Ms. Simponia, for making a difference in our school district and in our lives.
I'd now like to ask Ms. Nancy Pickford from Minnesaki to come to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Minnesaki, I would like to thank the board for your unwavering dedication and support throughout the years, especially this year. With me this evening, I have Maddie Butler and Holden Cohn, two students from Mrs. Hunter's 5th grade class, and our assistant principal, Mrs. Kirsch. Maddie and Holden have a few words they would like to share about our board liaison, Mr. Connors.
Good evening. My name is Maddie Butler, and this is my friend Holden Cohn. We are proud to be here tonight representing Minnesaki Elementary School, home of the Minnesaki Stars. It's hard to imagine that we've been back at school for over a month now. We are so grateful to our entire Three Village Board of Education and administration for working so hard together on our behalf so that we could be back safely where we belong, doing what we love to do, learn. In particular, we want to take a few minutes to thank our Minnesaki board liaison, Mr. Bill Connors, and recognize him of his wonderful accomplishments.
Mr. Connors has lived in Three Village for 47 years. He is married with four children who all graduated from World Melville High School. He is a grandpa too. Mr. Connors retired from Suffolk County Community College in 2011 after holding a variety of faculty and senior administrative positions spanning 44 years. These include Associate Vice President for Academic Affairs, College Dean of Faculty, Executive Dean, CEO of Ammerman and Eastern Campuses, Associate Vice President for Student Affairs, and Dean of Faculty at the Ammerman and Grant Campuses. Mr. Connors holds a Bachelor of Arts in History from St. Anselm College, a Master of Education in Counseling Psychology from Springfield College, and a Master of Public Administration and Management from Long Island University. He was selected to appear in Who's Who in American Education.
Mr. Connors has also been active in numerous community activities and has served as a member and vice president of the Board of Trustees of the MS Clark Library from 1984 to 1992. He had previously been on the Board of Education from 1994 to 2006 and served as president from 1996 to 2006. He was also vice president from 1995 to 1996. He was elected again to the Board of Education in 2012 and has been serving our community with style and grace ever since.
Mr. Connors, 2020 has been such a tough year for so many. With your perseverance and dedication and a whole lot of know-how, you and the board and the administration have figured out how to get us back to doing all the things we hold dear academically and socially. The world might seem very different in some ways right now, but please know, because of your efforts, Three Village schools are thriving, vibrant learning centers once again.
That's right, Holden. Within our walls and across vast Wi-Fi signals, the skills and knowledge we need are being cultivated, and the passions and empathy that will solve the world's most challenging problems are being born. Thank you for all you continue to do to enable all of us to grow and succeed. Minnesaki loves you and extends a huge air hug to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Minnesaki. I'd like to ask Ms. Roseanne Dibella from Mount Elementary School to come to the microphone.
Good evening. Mrs. Hydrick and I would like to thank you all for inviting us once again to honor our very dedicated Board of Education trustees. We are honored to do this, and it's no small feat that you have done this during this year, so we especially thank you this year for that. I have tonight with us Mr. Patrick Hobbs, one of our outstanding teachers from Mount Elementary School, and he would love to introduce you to our student presenter. Mr. Hobbs?
Good evening, folks. This lovely young lady is Morgan Mullen. I had the pleasure of having Sean, her older brother, in class a number of years ago, and I just found out, speaking with Mr. Mullen, that he's graduating law school, so that's a great compliment to the district and to your brother. And Ms. Morgan would like to be a veterinarian someday. And we were dissecting owl pelts the other day, and I have to say, Morgan had, what, about 300 bones neatly lined up on her table in front of her, analyzing them and picking them apart. And very encouraging, I think she's going to be quite the veterinarian when she gets older. So, without further ado, Morgan?
Hello. My name is Morgan Mullen, and I'm here tonight to talk about Mount Elementary School's Board of Education trustee, Mrs. Bavinka. Mrs. Bavinka is a World Melville High School graduate and is very involved with her community. She's the chair for the President's Volunteer Service Award Committee and strongly believes that education is the most important thing for a child to develop and grow from. She has done a lot for our community, especially with fundraising for charities. She is a role model for us all. Mrs. Bavinka's main hobby is helping people. She considers herself a helper. She also believes that volunteering is very rewarding and one of the best ways to help your community. Mrs. Bavinka says, whatever your cause is, do it. Thank you, Mrs. Bavinka, for your hard work and dedication to our Three Village community.
Thank you, Mount. I'd now like to introduce Ms. Heather Levine from NASCAEG Elementary School.
Good evening. We are so honored to be here with you tonight, honoring each and every one of you for all that you've done for the Three Village community. We are here to speak on behalf of our Board of Education liaison, Mr. Vincent Viso. I would like to introduce the two teachers who I have with me this evening, Mr. Alu, who is our math AIS teacher, as well as Mrs. Vorer, who is our fabulous 5th grade teacher. They will introduce our two student representatives.
So, before our two amazing volunteers step up, I just wanted to take a moment to say that I, on a very personal level, know all about the impact that Mr. Viso has made on his students over the years. I, long ago, longer than I care to mention, was a student. Was a student in Mr. Viso's Spanish classroom. And boy, what a memorable experience it was. Still today, I can run into former classmates and everyone, and I mean everyone, remembers Mr. Viso because Mr. Viso made learning fun, and Mr. Viso made that foreign language classroom in Jolinas a place where you wanted to be. And I think when the students are wearing smiles on their faces, and they're engaged, and they are feeling successful, that's when real learning takes place, and that's where a teacher can inspire their students. And that's what Mr. Viso did for me. And Mr. Viso, my experience in your classroom and your positive influence is one of the reasons I'm a teacher today. So, I just wanted to say thank you so much for everything you did for me. And beyond that, we're really here to talk about your many accomplishments, not about me, but the many lives you've touched over the years and what you still continue today to do, serving on the board. So, thank you. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Vorer.
Mr. Alu had a lot to say, so I'm going to keep it brief. I have two amazing 5th graders here today that took the time to interview Mr. Viso. I have TJ Kazoric, and I have Ethan O'Connor.
Last week, we went, we met Mr. Alu and Mrs. Vorer to choose interview questions for Mr. Viso. On Friday morning, we interviewed Mr. Viso over a Google Meet. We learned a lot about him, but what most stood out was Mr. Viso's love for the education in the Three Village community. Since 1988, Mr. Viso has lived in the Three Village with his wife, Elsa, for 40 years, and his two sons, Vincent and Derek. He is a grandfather to two girls and two chihuahuas. Mr. Viso spoke fondly about the family atmosphere, how parents were involved in their children's education, how he loved seeing students and families at Costco, but most of all, his love for the students in Three Village.
Mr. Viso was a student at St. Joseph's, thinking he would become a dentist, but once he found education, he never looked back. He earned a degree in psychology and Spanish. He started his career in Three Village, running the theater program and teaching Spanish at Jolinas, where he taught Mr. Alu. He became the language chairperson at Jolinas and Murphy before becoming assistant principal at Murphy. Then, the big cheese, he became the principal of Murphy. He had 34 years of dedication to the students and families of the Three Village community. Today, Mr. Viso still serves the Three Village community in the Board of Education. He said he still cares about Three Village's children and wants to help any way he can. He is also the Assistant Superintendent of Education for Rockville Center Diocese.
When asked what he most valued about education, Mr. Viso said, "Children are like a sponge. The more they can bring in, the more they can give out to the world. I always try my best to give to my students and my family the most I could give." Mr. Viso is most proud of the influence he has made on so many students and his own sons. "Mr. Viso, we appreciate everything you give to our community. Muchas gracias, proud todos."
That was wonderful, thank you. And now, I'd like to introduce the principal of Stokic Elementary School, Karen Mizel.
Good evening. This is one of our favorite times of the year to honor you and thank you for everything that you've done. And I just believe the last seven months, the support that you've given for us to be in five days has just been amazing, and I want to thank the board for that. And tonight, we want to honor our president, Inger Germano. With me tonight, I have Dr. Deanna Rinaldi, our assistant principal, and Noriana Korzenko, one of our 5th grade students, and her teacher is Michelle Samini.
Good evening. My name is Nori Korzenko, and I'm a 5th grader at Stokic Elementary School. This evening, I'm here to tell you about Mrs. Inger Germano, the representative of Stokic School. The Stokic students and teachers are proud to have Mrs. Germano as a representative. I recently interviewed Mrs. Germano about memories from her own days in elementary school. "I have so many fond memories," she said. "My favorite memory from elementary school was playing a munchkin in the Wizard of Oz play. I met so many friends, and I am still friends with them today. Her funniest memory made me laugh. She recalled rolling down a hill with her friend Alicia during a three-legged race at Field Day." Mrs. Germano has served on the Board of Education for 10 years and currently holds the position of president. She is a role model for students in the Three Village School District. We are so very lucky that she moved to in 2005 with her husband and two daughters. Mrs. Germano is an advocate for public education and believer that every child has a right to reach his or her maximum potential, and that truly takes a village to raise a child. She feels that it is important that every decision made is rooted in the best interests of the of the students and stakeholders, especially this year because of the pandemic, which she has done an amazing job with, by the way. In a recent interview, she said reopening the schools is a priority and safety for students and staff was essential. Now, that's awesome. I mean, who would have thought that such a kind, caring, amazing person like Mrs. Germano would be Satakeh's representative on the board and the president of the board? Mrs. Germano has more than 20 years of experience in the healthcare management field and is the owner and president of the Universal Medical Building, a full-service medical management company. Wow. She previously held positions as director and administrator in several multi-state radiology and cardiology practices. So cool. Mrs. Germano also serves as the vice president for operations of Global Reliance Reality, owned by her and her husband. She is a hard-working person. How many people have that many jobs? She did all that and still has time to help her community. Mrs. Germano and her husband volunteer for many community clubs, events, and committees, including the Girl Scouts of Suffolk County, St. James Roman Catholic Church, Three Village Basketball, and the Satakeh Fire Department. In addition to her service as a district trustee, Mrs. Germano has previously served on the North Shore Montessori Board. Wow. She has time for everything. She reminds me of this quote, "Save the excuses. It's not about having time, it's about making time. If it matters, you'll make time." Mrs. Germano really makes time for everything. Thank you, Mrs. Germano, for all you do for the students and community of Three Village.
We want to thank all of our administrators, our teachers, and most especially, our students and their parents for being here this evening and for honoring our board members. So thank you, and we wish you a wonderful evening, and we're going to now invite our secondary students and staff members in. Thank you. You all did a wonderful job. Excellent. We'd like to continue with our board recognition, and I'd like to invite Ms. Corinne Keen from Jolinas to the microphone.
Good evening. We're so happy to be here to celebrate all of you and thank you for all of your dedication and service to Three Village. I'm here this evening with Mr. Jansen, our assistant principal, our student government advisor, Mrs. Indelicado, guidance counselor, and Mrs. Clunin, our special education teacher. And we are lucky enough to have Katie Lacerides and Ally Pupula with us. Katie is our student government president this year, and Ally is our new elected vice president, and we are here to honor Ms. Gish.
Board of Education Vice President, Mrs. Irene Gish, has been a resident of the Three Village School District since 1974. She first became a board member in 1982, and this is her current 22nd year on the board. Mrs. Gish grew up in Brooklyn and started to raise her family there. They had friends in the Three Village area and decided to make the move. At the time, she already knew that the Three Village School District was the place to be. Mrs. Gish has two children who graduated from Ward Melville High School and is a proud grandmother of five grandchildren. When Mrs. Gish's daughter was in elementary school, she began attending the Board of Education meetings and eventually decided that she would like to be more involved and become a board member. She then ran and served on the board from 1982 to 1994, and then returned in 2011. Mrs. Gish is especially proud of the depth of our arts program and the exceptional opportunities that we are able to give to our students.
Mrs. Gish is well-known for her bountiful vegetable garden that fields most of her neighborhood. Additionally, Mrs. Gish is an avid knitter and sewer and is rumored to have baby sweaters ready to go whenever there is news of a new bundle of joy. Besides her contributions on the board, over the years, Mrs. Gish has contributed to many plays in the district by creating beautiful costume designs. When her daughter was at Ward Melville, she was involved with the play. She asked her mother to help out with the costumes and was told it would be a small job. After that, the rest is history. Mrs. Gish, we wish you a wonderful year as you serve as our Board of Education Vice President. We look forward to having you as our Jolinas liaison. Thank you.
Thank you, Jolinas. I'd now like to introduce the principal of Murphy Junior High School, Dr. Brian Biscari.
It feels weird. I'm smiling under here to greet everybody, but you can't really see it. On behalf of the Murphy community, Mr. Roof and I just want to thank you for everything you have done and continue to do for our students, our staff, and our faculty. We appreciate your support and all the time and energy you put into making this such a wonderful district. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Jeannie Hill, who's one of our music teachers at Murphy, to introduce our student representative. Thank you.
I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Rachel Rose, a wonderful member of our student government. She's also an extraordinarily talented musician and a dedicated member of our community service team.
On behalf of Murphy Junior High School, I am pleased to recognize and thank Mr. Jonathan Cornrash, trustee of the Board of Education, for his service to the Three Village Central School District. Mr. Cornrash is a staunch supporter of developing the entrepreneurial ecosystem on Long Island. He serves on the corporate board of a biotech device manufacturer, runs a property management and investment company, serves as a legal technical consultant, and as a consultant to an engineering firm, and is a part-owner of a restaurant and a meringue plantation. He is also active as an angel investor and advisor. He currently serves on the Board of Education Audit Subcommittee. A father of two Three Village students, Mr. Cornrash believes deeply in the importance of education, community service, and philanthropy. He is president of the Three Village Civic Association and vice president of the Suffolk County Boys and Girls Club. He is also a past president of the North Shore Montessori School in Stony Brook. Mr. Cornrash, we thank you for your commitment to our district and your support of our students and their endeavors. Your dedication means more than you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Murphy. I'd now like to introduce the principal of Ward Melville High School, Mr. Bill Bernhard.
Thank you, everyone. On behalf of Ginny Edgar, our special education teacher and student government advisor, and Gus Huber from the Academy, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Jesse Behar to discuss and pay tribute to our Board of Education trustee, Dr. Kerman.
Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Bernhard. Hello, I'm Jesse Behar, the student representative, and I'm honored to be saying a few words of appreciation on behalf of the student body for the service and dedication Dr. Kerman has shown our district. I want to start with a quote from the Dr. Seuss book, Delorex. "Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not." Volunteers do so because we care and want to better the community. I was initially unsure about what to say tonight. Aside from last month's meeting and presenting to the board when I was 10, I've not had a chance to know Dr. Kerman yet, and he's been very much part of the lives of thousands of students in Three Village and public education as a whole, even before I was born. I started running what I knew. Dr. Kerman went to Tulane. He's a dentist. He's a lifelong community member. His wife was an educator, and his two sons went to school here. And then I Googled you. It's what teenagers do. And I found out you're on a Wiki page. Pretty cool. You served our country as an army captain, and in the last 21 years, 15 of those years have been spent serving the district in various roles, including the president. You've been part of establishing a vision, policy, budgets, programs, training, safety, and keeping us educated during the worst health pandemic of our life. You attend open and closed scheduled meetings, answer questions, speak to the press, and attend PTA meetings. All volunteer. I did some math estimations here. Mr. Bernhard, correct me if I'm wrong. My bad. You're there before. If Dr. Kerman only volunteered one and a half hours a week for 52 years, sorry, 52 weeks over 15 years, that is over 1,000 hours of community service, and I'm sure it's been more than that. This equates to at least six months of full-time work. Dr. Kerman, you've served our country, community, and public education. I sincerely value what you do, and I hope to continue to serve in a meaningful manner as you have. I'm honored to be speaking on your behalf as a student rep, and I want to personally thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
Mr. Bernhard, is there anyone speaking from the Academy this evening?
No, we're speaking on their behalf.
Okay, thank you.
So now we're, so our final dedication tonight is to your Board of Education student liaison and our student government president, Jesse Behar. Jesse is a scholar, an athlete, and a leader. I have been his principal since Jolinas, grade seven, for six years now. I remember him as a ninth grader addressing the Jolinas student body in the aftermath of the Parkland shooting. I knew he was truly remarkable from that point. From honors jazz band to quarterback to aspiring to work in the business field, our student body president is on a path to make lots of money and change the world for the better. 10 years from now, I'm sure we're all going to be wanting his autograph. Some of the things that we've heard about him through the years. Quote, "It's not often that I come across a student with such dedication, the things he truly cares about. He has an intrinsic passion for making a positive impact on his peers." Jesse is a born leader. That's an understatement. Jesse's confidence, poise, and determination enable him to be a well-liked and respected leader. Jesse is not just a student with an impressive resume. He is a kind and thoughtful friend, an inquisitive and responsible student, and a genuine, humble leader with grace. We congratulate Jesse on all his accomplishments and his dedication to the Three Village community. And just to wrap up our whole entire dedication and tribute to the board, I just have one last question for you. If you could be an animal, what would that be? Jesse?
A dolphin.
And how come?
Because it's the smartest dolphin for you.
All right, very good answer. Thank you, Jesse. Come on up. For those of you who weren't here, that was a question for Kathy to start the presentation.
To all of our administrators, to our teachers, and to our students and their families, we thank you so much for being part of this special evening. You are certainly welcome to stay. However, if you would like to leave at this point, we would not be insulted, so we will give you that opportunity. We know you're up early. So thank you. Now we'd like to move on to our next portion of the agenda, the public participation of the 30 minutes in length. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? Okay, moving on to the minutes, the minutes of August 26th and September 16, 2020. Can I have a motion? Ms. Gish? Mr. Connors, on favor? Motion passes. Next for the reports, the student representative report, Jesse.
Is this on? Yeah, there we go. Good evening. For anyone who's not tuned in last month, I'm Jesse Behar, the student representative. First, I want to follow up on some old news. Last month, I reported on sports being shut down by Section 11 and high-risk sports being shut down by the state. While we are not able to compete in inter-scholastic sports at this time, it has been great having use of the fields, seeing the coaching staff, and having off-season activities. The students are grateful for your public support and letter to Section 11. We ask that you please continue to apply pressure on both Section 11 and the state to ensure that we have sports in 2021. Moving to new news, the theme is modifications. Most clubs have restarted, some remote, some in person. When I checked in with several club leaders, almost all reported needing to modify how they exist, including virtual events and community fundraisers. Most clubs are conducting elections right now virtually. The overall feeling is positive despite all these modifications. A senior committee was formed of the students, parents, and staff to come up with and enhance the senior experience. The committee is in brainstorming phase, and I hope to report more about this in the next meeting. Students that I've checked in with are grateful to be in the building, but we are still adapting to learning on the Chromebooks. Going from paper to online has benefited some and hurt others. It has been hard to not see the expression on some teachers' faces, but I learned some teachers are uploading videos themselves, which is awesome, and us students are grateful for those types of things. So overall, it is good to be back in person, and we thank the board, teachers, administration for making this happen. Adjusting to modified events, learning methods, and not really being able to socialize is still a learning curve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Next under reports, item C, independent auditor's report. Jeff?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Mr. Joe Kim and Tom Smith from our independent auditing firm, EFPR Group. I'd just like to mention that prior to this meeting, the audit report was reviewed in some detail by the audit committee. recommended, and vote no on the ones that they are not supporting.
Okay.
Dr. Kerman?
Mr. Connors, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you.
E, the revision to the 2021 school calendar?
Yes, this is just a pro forma act. The Board of Education had agreed to move the Professional Development Day that had been scheduled for November 3rd on Tuesday Election Day to September 1st, so that we could provide front-load professional development for our staff. So, this is just validating that decision, and that will be a day that there will be no school for staff or for students.
Right, any questions? Okay, have a motion, please? Ms. Gish, Mr. Visal, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Or some, motion passes. Okay, F, Response to Intervention, Academic Intervention Plan for 2021?
The district is required to submit a plan for response to intervention in AIS services every year. Due to the fact that the state assesses we're not given last year, the data that is being utilized is from the previous year for this plan. In addition to that, the state is now requiring that we must have a behavioral tiering component, so part of our interventional processes is not only for academic areas, but also for student behaviors. We've been working with a subcommittee of the RTI Committee on developing the plan, as well as working with our social workers and psychologists throughout the district to try to develop concepts on how we would address behavior. One of the areas we're looking into is restorative justice. It's a program that's been around for a few years, and we've been utilizing some of the components of that at the Academy. So, this is going to be a goal for us for this year as we look to implement the behavioral tiering component of the plan.
Thank you. Any questions? Have a motion? Mr. Visal, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. Acceptance of the Independent Orders Report? You already did that one? Yes. Sorry. J, Vision of the 2021 Appointment of Impartial Hearing Officers?
We have one addition and one subtraction from the list.
Okay. So moved. Ms. Gish, Mr. Visal, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. J, Approval of Addendum to Contract with Outside Service Providers for Special Education Services?
This contract is to amend the existing contract to also include telehealth services.
Okay. Mr. Cornreich, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. K, Acceptance of Donations?
We have three donations. The first is a check for $735 from the Teller Tutors. If you recall, we heard from them at the last board meeting. This is the official acceptance of their donation, and that's to the food pantry. We have $1,200 in gift cards from Meals on Wheels to the food pantry, and a piano donated by a district resident, Mr. Michael Hemming, to the Ward Melville High School Music Department.
Thank you. Very nice. Mr. Cornreich, Mr. Visal, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. L, Declaration of Surplus Equipment?
We have three pieces of musical equipment that are in unplayable and irreparable condition.
Mr. Cornreich, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. M, Resolution Recalling Excess Teacher Assistance, Teaching Assistance?
Yes, this is as a result of some of our folks getting probationary positions. It allowed us to recall some of our excess teaching assistance.
Okay, Dr. Kerman? Ms. Gish, all in favor? Motion passes. N, Approval Memorandum of Agreement Between the Three Village Central School District and Three Village Teachers Association Regarding Addition of Coaching Stifened?
So, we added a position of junior varsity golf that we did not have a salary for, so after negotiations with the TVTA, we came up with this agreement.
Mr. Connors, Dr. Kerman, all in favor? Motion passes. L, Approval of Agreement Between the Three Village Central School District and Three Village Teachers Association Regarding Addition of Coaching Stifened?
So, we added a position of junior varsity golf that we did not have a salary for, so after negotiations with the TVTA, we came up with this agreement.
Mr. Connors, Dr. Kerman, all in favor? Motion passes. L, Approval of the Agreement Between the Three Village Central School District and the Three Village Teachers Association and the employees named in the attached confidential Schedule A?
This was as a result of all of the, what we were considering the COVID-type teachers to be employed with us for just this year.
Mr. Visal, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. P, Approval of the Agreements Between the Three Village Central School District and the Three Village Teachers Association and the employee named in the attached confidential Schedule B?
This MOA is allowing our employees that assisted us from TAs to teachers, allowing them to keep their former benefits.
Thank you. Mr. Connors? Dr. Kerman, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. Q, Personal Matters? One instructional? Q1?
Nothing unusual with this.
Okay, have a motion, please? Ms. Gish? Mr. Cornreich, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. Two non-instructional?
Also, nothing unusual with this.
Mr. Cornreich, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Oppose, motion passes. R, Recommendation of Committee on Special Education and Subcommittee in Accommodations for 504 Plan Meetings for the Date Stated? Mr. Cornreich, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. And S, Recommendation of Committee... Thank you. Mr. Cornreich? Mrs. Gish? All in favor? Oppose, motion passes. R, Recommendation of Committee on Special Education and Subcommittee in Accommodations for 504 Plan Meetings for the date stated? Mr. Cornreich, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes. And S, Recommendation of Committee... Thank you. Mr. Cornreich? Mrs. Gish? All in favor? Oppose, motion passes. Do we have any information, items of interest? No? Okay, public participation, second of the 30 minutes of length. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? No? Have a motion for adjournment? Dr. Kerman, Ms. Gish?